Gendarme.
I do, I have a October 7th School Board Committee update.
Anything else? Okay, motion to approve the agenda is commended.
Second.
Motion seconded, all in favor? Yeah, ready? About public farm, anybody? Public farm? Is that it? Prove the minutes is September 23rd. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Okay. And committee and board reports. Dan?
All right, this was the Monday, October 7th meeting for the RSU 21 Board of Directors. They started at 5 with an executive session. The meeting started about 6:15, somewhere in that range. The board chair gave an update on the mediation for the teacher contract. You know, she stated that the mediation continues. The ad hoc committee has met and she talked a little bit about the homecoming, that they had a good homecoming. Then it was for public comment and the chair stated that, you know, the rules for public comment, three minutes each, 15 minutes unless somebody makes a motion to extend. And she did state that during normal discussions, there will be no public comments allowed. Past board member stood up and kind of made comment to that, saying that that's not right, what have you. And board chair stated that's the policy. So they had folks come out, make some comments. Then they went into the superintendent's report. And this was, there were four areas that they did their dip reports, that's their department improvement plan report. If you remember a few meetings ago, the school principals gave their five-year plans on what was going on. So this one was technology, curriculum, special services, you know, special needs kids, gifted and talented, and then communication. So these were pretty lengthy reports, they gave those reports. The funny thing is, was after each report, you know, the chairs, you know, asked the board members if they had any comments. And then she said, anybody from the public want to comment? So she held out public comment. At first couple of ones, there were no comments. And then there were a couple others where there, you know, some members of the public did stand up and make some comments. Well, they talked about updating the instructional calendar. They were kind of running out of time. So a motion was made at around 9:20 to extend the meeting. They're supposed to at nine o'clock make a motion. But there was a report going on, so they usually wait until that particular item is done and then they'll make a motion. So they, they made a motion to extend the meeting. The board chair stated that the committee reports would be postponed until the next meeting. Then they talked about the Maine School Management Association Annual Meeting. None of the board members had, had, had put in for representing that. Gail Spolford is currently a representative there. And Kristin Shapiro kind of said, yeah, you know, I'd like to do that also. So more to come on that. And we adjourned at 9:35 PM.
While I'm saying your comments, say hello comment.
Yeah, it's kind of weird and I've been wanting to, to email Leslie. I just haven't had a chance and I've been gone for the, since Friday morning. So I, just out of curiosity, I'll message, email to her, say, you know, what is the policy? I know that the policy committee, that is one policy that is up for review. So they will be reviewing that. And there are, from what I hear, there are some members that really want to make sure that we, they iron out what's allowed. Cause I guess it's pretty, pretty vague. I haven't looked at the policy myself, but, so hopefully they'll kind of iron that out and make that a little bit more.
User friendly?
Yeah, user friendly and more open for the general public, I hope, but we'll see.
Well, the finance committee did not meet this month because their audit is ongoing and everything, nothing had changed a lot. So they weren't meeting until next month. Okay, managers' report, the ambulance update?
Yeah, just, you know, obviously I put it into your executive summary, but we're waiting patiently now for the ambulance to be delivered. The last we knew that it was fully assembled and come from Canada into Madawaska. I think they're doing some final, you know, technical things, putting the writings on the, the, letters on the side of the, of the unit and those types of things. But we fully expect it here very soon. And as you know, with the, with the change that we achieved with the modification of the TIF, the money for the purchase of the ambulance will come from the TIF funds that we'd already earmarked and approved for that. The, I think you all were present at the fire station committee meeting. I thought it was productive. Select board member Jason Neto has done an excellent job of providing us a first document to, to view. And I thought the, the give and take at the meeting to try to modify, make some changes and continue to try to stay within the existing footprint that was recognized when Jason put the package together was, was helpful. I think we're all looking forward to the, to the next rendering of that and we'll schedule another meeting. And Jason, I don't know if, if we're at a position yet to do a rendering of the exterior of the building yet, or you want to go over the interior one more time before we do that exterior piece?
Let me feel Steve out and see who would schedule whatever.
Okay, all right.
Before we get too far though, shouldn't we get the issue ironed out on what's allowed there, right? Cause right now it's not conforming. I think we should, before we start spending a whole bunch of money, we need to make sure that that is, that we're okay to do that, right? I, I think we need to work that issue priority.
Yeah.
Without a town meeting, we'll never know if we can do it or not.
Well, I, it's not, it's not a town meeting per se. It's a, it's a enforcement of an ordinance. And whether, you know, right now that, that, that 30% coverage has been in violation on that property probably for 30, 40 years. And whether or not we think we need to exercise that. I, I think, you know, Tom, maybe you can lay in a little, I know we talked a little bit about it at the committee meeting, but I'm not quite sure how we proceed with that to, other than to acknowledge the fact that it is in violation during our, during our public hearing process, to let the public know, engage their reaction to that. I'm not quite sure how else we do it.
I indicated, I think the first thing we gotta do is we gotta lay it out for Jim and saying, hey, we come forward and looking for a permit to put this thing up, what are you gonna do?
Right.
And if he's gonna say, I can't give it to you, I think we then got to explore other options, whether that's amending the zoning ordinance, or whether it's a variance, or whether it's contract zone or something to that effect.
Yep.
Or to.
I agree, agree 100%. And I, and I think we need to get that issue resolved sooner than most of the other stuff.
I think that's square one, you gotta, you gotta, you can't do it because, or you can't do it because of zoning issue and you're not going to be able to address that quickly.
Yeah, right.
Because you don't know, even if we took it to the town, whether they approve it, the ordinance change or not, like they would, but who knows?
Correct. Well, I can get, I certainly can, can have more conversation with Jim in relation to it to see what his position is going to be in terms of issuing a permit, so.
I guess he can see what Jason's laid out, so at least the footprint's there.
Right, right. Well, I'll pursue that a little bit more and see where that gets us. That's a, hopefully I'll have something to report to you folks at the next committee meeting. So we have some sort of idea as to what, what may be forthcoming. The next thing is I just wanted to advise you all that the, the recall petitions have been returned to the clerk's office. She was out on Thursday of last week, Wednesday and Thursday of last week. I know that the, the deputy clerk went ahead and it appears that, we'll have the clerk take a look at it, but it appears that the signatures, there was enough signatures on the documents to certify the, the, the recall petition moving forward. So once she gives us the official certification, I think we have 10 days front, once she presents that to the board to meet and decide when, when a ballot question and voting will take place on that.
Is it 10 or 14 days?
I think it's 10, I think it's 10. I think she has seven and then you have, you have 10, I think.
Let me take a peek. It was a 14-day thing early on in that process, if I remember right.
Says, within seven business days, receiving a petition, the clerk shall determine whether the petition forms meet the criteria and certify, and then send notifications to select board, initiate the petition and the official subject to recall. So she'll send out notices to both the petitioner and the person being recalled. And then within 10 business days of the certification, the petition of the petition, the select board shall schedule a recall election to determine whether the official subject to petition should be recalled. And that petition must be held no less than 45 days, no more than 75 days.
Okay.
Excuse me. So when I look at that, it looks like, and I've had this conversation with the clerk, looks like we'll get through the November election and then, then we'll have a ballot election for recall. It'll be sometime after, after that. So I, there was a lot of effort. Folks thought that they could maybe combine it to the election, but that's not going to be the case. It's going to be one of those standalone ballot questions. Unfortunately, it's what, eight to eight? So the, the polls will have to be open, people will have to get the opportunity to come in and, and vote, so.
So we'll have to have a special meeting then in order to schedule that, right?
I think so. Yeah, yeah, I, I'm not quite sure if, if we get it back in time, we may be able to put it on the agenda for the 28th of October for discussion. And possibly, if she certifies it and gets it to me, and then I can notify you folks and you guys can have that discussion and suggestion at your meeting on the 28th, I think that's doable.
That goes beyond the. Oh, no, okay.
And then we have 45 days?
Between 45 and 75, I'll provide some options to you folks at that point to, to see what's the best day. And I'll talk with the clerk to see what she, she thinks in terms of a day as well, but.
Yeah, she's got a lot more work to do than we do on that.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, what's nice about it is that the, the current staff in the office is, is really grasping the whole process a little bit better. And I think, you know, the efforts that were being made by both the deputy tax collector and the, or the tax collector and the, and the deputy town clerk were pretty good this past week while she was out, so. We'll see what, how it unfolds.
Can I ask a stupid question? Is that business days, like seven business days, 10 business days?
It just says seven days. You know, I don't know if there's been any legal, legal interpretation other than business days. I think it's seven days. Yeah. Yeah, they include, and for us it would be Friday, Friday would have to be.
What was your next question? Is our calendar changed where we're not open on Friday?
Correct. I think it's days, yep, they're straight days. The next thing is that I would, obviously after your meeting with the budget board and, and yourselves, you've approved a special town, hopefully you're going to sign a special town meeting warrant to be, take action on October 28th. I have documents, I have really three warrants that, copies of the warrant that I'd like to have signed with you folks, signing them if, if you're so inclined.
Motion to approve the special town meeting on October 28th to commit the ARPA funds.
All right, motion made by Dan, seconded by Jason. Any other comments? All in favor? All right.
Thanks.
They're all right here, I think I've got them, hit the signage.
You know, put that on the town website, right?
Right, now that you've approved it, I'm going to put it on the website. I'll probably put the, the explanation piece, I'll, I'll add a little bit more to the explanation piece so people understand what they'll be voting on.
What's that, Gailma?
Noise enforcement, 660 Alfred Road.
Yes, I, I believe I've provided you a copy of a letter that was sent to you, the select board on October 3rd. I think I got it after your last meeting in reference to possible noise enforcement at the, that the shop, which is located at 660 Alfred Road. It appears one of the budding neighbors is concerned that the noise that's coming from the, the shop is exceeding the noise ordinance as written in the land use ordinance for the town. I've had, what I did is I, in your packet, I provided to you the, obviously the letter as well as the findings of facts and the motion for approval when, when the shop was provided its approvals. That information, because Jim was on vacation last week, that information I forwarded to Leah and had a conversation with her the end of last week on this very subject. Her opinion is that we have a straight, straightforward noise violation. There's, if, if the, if the noise is excessive over the decibel limit, then there's a violation there that, that would need to be issued to the owner of the, of the property that's creating the noise. So that will incur, for us, that will, Jim is going to have to make some, some time and spend some time in and around that location with his decibel meter to try to identify those, those events when they occur that we can get on the meter and record them as well as then provide us a report that can then be submitted to the property owner that in fact they're, they're in violation of the ordinance. I know that a, a, a select board member, Labby and I spoke and I, he had indicated that perhaps if he had some time last Thursday, he was going to spend a little time up in Aguey. It appears that from what he was being told that Thursday seemed to be the days that there was a little more excessive noise than in the past. So I don't know if, Phil, if you had an opportunity to do that. Okay, all right. So my, my plan of action here is to talk with Jim when he's back in the office tomorrow and try to make this a priority so we can, we can at least establish some parameters as to the noise violations that are, that are being proposed or being created from that location. So I'm not quite sure if, if there's any other things you want to talk about that. I, it was funny because I, as you well know, you know, the, these, I get kind of curious about this stuff because I, I, I've always been into motorsports and things to that nature. So I get curious to, as to if these dynos are in the area. And if you recall, we had, there's a dino in Alfred that I know of. And his, the shop that he has is, is, is buffered away from any residential properties across the street from where this dino is located is the, is the CMP station up there on Alfred, in Alfred, on Route 4. And you have Shaw's Ridge just above it. So there's not a lot of residential property around and he is, that individual has had no, no complaints so far, but he did indicate that it's extremely loud when it's running. And then we had one that was on Route 1 here in Arundel that was owned by a business. And we had complaints that were lodged. I know that Jim went up and spoke to that individual and they removed it and sent it to his business partner, which he was in South Portland. And so I'm not sure the status of, of that dino, what I understand, it's still in operation, but it's not in our town. So right now we have the one, the one and only one that I know of on Alfred Road. So they become more prevalent to those shops that are into tuning high-performance or race cars. They seem to be more prevalent in those shops. You know, the, the person who's just turning wrenches, changing oil changes and those types of things generally won't have this type of equipment in their property. So I'm not quite sure if, I think the, we have to, at this point, it's my view that we follow the ordinance as written and determine at that point how we address that issue for the property owner.
So we're going to proceed on a violation of the noise ordinance? We're not going to proceed on violation of his site review permit?
That, that was the opinion that I received from the attorney. She felt it was a noise ordinance that, when she read that language, that it certainly fell within. It wasn't, it wasn't very clear, one way or the other, whether the dino was ever mentioned or not mentioned. But it was referenced that noise would be considered as part of the approval.
Yeah. Will not produce noise, odors, et cetera, or the nuisances that would adversely impact the quality of life surrounding parcels? No, I don't.
Number eight in their approval from the planning board. So it looks as though they're, they're messing that one up.
So I'm just going to pick your brain down there. So, so you think there's an argument that can be made within the approval process that was planted? Would you then say that we would have a little further teeth to just prevent it, period?
Well, it says, be it resolved that based upon the above findings and conclusions, we're issuing the site. I mean, I think there's certainly an argument to be made.
Okay.
And, and the other thing that I, you know, we talked about the dino, there's nothing here about the dino. The dino was an important piece of that was causing this issue that could cause a noise. And I know that the previous fire chief had huge concerns about noise, fire and safety. And I don't know why there's nothing in here on that, but I had, he had, he had talked to me at one time about this and he's like, you know that they're putting in a dino over there? And he was, he was not happy about that. So I don't know why we got nothing, there's no documentation in here or in any of the planning board stuff about that dino. But the chief specifically said something to me about that.
Okay.
And he was concerned about noise, he was concerned about safety, he was concerned about fire suppression. You know, an engine blows up or whatever. So, you know, to me, that's an, that's an important piece of, of this auto repair shop, just a regular auto repair shop. Okay, but when you're throwing in a dino, that's, that's a very important piece. That's not just a regular piece of equipment.
Correct, it's an expensive piece.
Right, expensive piece and, yeah. I don't know why there's nothing, I don't know if there's anything in, in the file.
I don't, well, I'm not quite sure, I don't believe there's anything in the file. I've had the.
That surprised me because the chief knew about it, somehow he knew about.
I think there was discussion among other people related to it. But I don't think it made it into the findings of fact, other than what was described in, in the, in the, in the document that's here for us.
Dan, you think the chief knew about it before the permit issued?
I don't, I don't remember, Tom, I really don't remember. I know we were talking about it and, and, and I think it's before it was issued, but I'm, I'm not 100% sure.
I'm just wondering whether it's something that was an add-on after.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
After they got a permit and then they.
You know, I, that was, he had mentioned that, you know, this happened back, what, in 21? Yeah, in 21. And I, I just recall him talking to me about it, but I can't say before or after.
Well, see, it, it, it feels from the discussion we're having at the board meeting tonight is that not only, not only do you feel that there could be a violation of the noise ordinance, she, they may, he may also be in violation of what approvals that he already was granted. And that should be notified as well.
He's definitely in violation of number eight.
I mean, I want to be sure Leah's on board with that, but I mean, that's, that's just my.
Right, yeah, I'll talk to her, I'll talk to her again. I know when we spoke about it, she, she didn't reference, when she looked at the document, she was more concerned that, you know, based on the ordinance, it's noise issue and that you need to, it's a noise violation, you need to deal with that.
I think what's happening now is when the first complaint started coming out, I, you know, everything was enclosed, but I think as of late, he's got the garage doors open.
Yeah.
And it's like significantly louder. You know, she was saying, well, he's doing it outside. Well, I doubt that he's doing it outside because you can't, the dynos don't, you can't take a dino and. Well, I doubt that he's doing it outside because you can't, the dynos don't, you can't take a dyno and, you know, move it outside. They usually, you know.
Yeah, I understand he's dedicated one bay to, to the dyno.
Right, so he may be opening up the doors and, you know, the exhaust, you know, I, I, I'm not sure, but.
I know that when I spoke to the, the, the gentleman in Alfred who has a dyno, indicated that, uh, his staff, I mean, when the dyno was operating, he used to have people repairing vehicles right near it. They just couldn't, they couldn't stand it. It was so, it was so noxious when it was operating. So, um, he had to make accommodations and move the dyno into a separate building, um, by itself. Um, but it's not, uh, other than just being a building, I don't think it's, uh, um, uh, what is it, muffled in any way other than just a general building, so.
It's hard to muffle it because you want free flow and exhaust because.
Right.
You know.
So, and I'm not sure if this is gonna slow down a little bit now that the, um, uh, I'm sure the racing or drag season will be coming to an end here soon. And, uh, the frequency of the use of the dyno is probably gonna slow down a bit unless you have somebody who is tuning a, uh, a sports car that they run on the road that want to have that, uh, performance enhanced at that time, so. But it shouldn't stop us one way or the other, there's a violation there and we'll need to address it.
Okay, how about the payable warrant?
Oh.
Motion's been made, the second I get that.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor? All right.
I got something, I, I got something now.
Oh. And before we go into executive session, Dan, you have something?
Yeah, as this system just kicked in here, started making this noise again. I know we've talked about this, we beat this and beat this, but and we like get a hold of the HVAC system and see if there's something that can be done, maybe bigger louvers, maybe, you know.
I meant to get my guy here to set it up.
This is long. Make a motion, we go into executive session, four oh five six A, the discussion of employee compensation.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? All ready, shut everything?